...cast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you please stand, the Plagial Agents?
(inaudible)
(inaudible) on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no appointments scheduled for today, so we'll start with resolutions. Item number one, job and family services bills.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Discussion?
One, wait, no, even, don't just ignore me, and then you go discussion, that's okay.
She forgot the discussion part, don't give her a hard time.
But she forgot me, you know?
No, no, she remembered.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Moore.
Oh, thank you, alright.
Investments?
I gave her a hard time a little bit for some-.
No, not at all.
Second.
You're not allowed.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
There wasn't any advances this morning.
Okay.
None.
None?
None.
None. All free.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Haven't seen it yet, so...
I don't think there's anything on it.
No, there is.
Yeah. The sheet I received had nothing on it.
The last one I saw had nothing on it, too.
So are we holding on us or on?
Well, I have other personnel issues that I'm going to need an executive session for, specifically, other new hires, and I need to have discussion with the board, which is a little blundered, so I'm trying more.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned, too. My phone was off again this morning, dead as a doornail, and this is about the second time since Nancy left.
Your phone was off?
Dead. The phone was dead, and this has happened before, and it's all been since Nancy left, and I'm wondering, what are we going to do about replacing Nancy? We've got Jeff's position, we've got Roxy's position.
With respect to the phones, Commissioner Vacy, while the administrator was on vacation, Mr. Twining took care of an issue.
Yeah, he had another one.
He called me to advise me what was transpiring, and I believe there was some paperwork that came through to let us know what was happening, so I think we bought, since I don't speak that language, bought some cards or something to make the phone system work, and it appears that, at least to my knowledge, that things are functioning properly now. Is that an accurate statement?
I know there was a catastrophic failure last week that required the replacement of some electronic boards. It's something that's happened in the past, and those things do happen, and they will happen in the future again. I understood that everything was up and running properly because Mitel was out here. I do have information on Mitel contracts and proposed restructuring of the job that I will present to the board in the next couple of days, the information's on my desk. And with respect to the clerk's position, we had discussion on that two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we were waiting for some information from Teresa, and I haven't received that information from her.
And presently, she's on vacation?
Yes.
Okay.
And she didn't leave me anything, so...
She left us an agenda.
Yes, she did.
But, obviously, we need to discuss those, I agree, and we can just, those are permissible items, because I've-.
Yeah, I think we do have to discuss them, and Jeff, that's a position that was very important.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Okay, so are we holding until after the executive session? Item number 10. authorize William C. Nagel Jr., Bailiff, Avon Lake Municipal Court, effective retroactive to May 31, 2003, replacing retired bailiff Paul T. Kitter. The salary will be $19,375.31, and the county's 2/5 share for bi-weekly rate will be $298.8.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Approve payment to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County Safety Harbor, Inc., doing business as Genesis House, for amounts collected by Lorraine County, $28,328, from January 1, 2003 through June 30, 2003. Collection and payment are pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 3113.39.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Item number 12. approve amendments to various contracts for the fiscal year 2004 Help Me Grow Program for Lorraine County Children and Family Council, effective retroactive to July 1, 2003 through June 30, 2004. Set amendments are to adjust award amounts due to the decrease in funding for GRF Part C and increase in funding in TANF. Catholic Charity Services Corp., Catholic Charities Family Center of Alariah, $89,620.23. Children's Development Center, $51,812.99. Community Health Partners Home Healthcare, $58,397.93. Alariah City Department of Health, $313,521.97. Lighthouse Family Service, also known as Lighthouse Family Services, $80,121.67. Lorraine City Health Department, $208,128.95. Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services, Inc., $11,765.19. Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, $30,787.12. Lorraine County General Health District, $151,538.24. Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County, $195,853.69.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Authorize North Ridge Road to be closed to one-way traffic during the Lorraine County Metropolitan Park District Pioneer Festival Days, September 6 and 7, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to ensure public safety.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Award contract to do 2D construction, Vermillion, Ohio, for the replacement of East River Road Bridge, number 0225, in Carlisle Township, and Albright Road, Culver, number 0014, in Amherst Township, in the amount of $57,152.60. And issue a notice to proceed later to start honor before August 25, 2003, and to complete honor before September 30, 2003. Also authorize county administrator to notify county auditor to release retainage at the completion of said project, and there were three bids received, with this one being the most responsive.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
County Administrator's report?
No reports, comments, anything.
Assistant County Prosecutor?
We didn't get sued this week, so...
Commissioners' report. Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to mention that I was pleased to represent the Board of Commissioners yesterday at the groundbreaking for the Lorraine County Visitor Bureau Center and State Route 58 in Amherst Township, and this was made possible by the work of a lot of people, including our newly-created Lorraine County Port Authority, which in March sold bonds in the amount of $1,245,000 to pay for the construction of this facility. So I was very pleased to be there, and I wanted to mention that to you. And the other thing is that on Monday, I attended, I think it's a monthly meeting, the Black River RAP Remedial Action Plan, and they had a group there, Delta Institute they're called. In fact, Mr. Twining's office has been working with them, and they made a report to the RAP Coordinating Committee, and they're working with the city of Alariah in mercury reduction at their sewage treatment plant. And one of the things that came forward from this meeting was that they're going to showcase what the Lake Erie Commission has been doing in conjunction with the Black River on September the 6th at the Rib Cook-Off that's being sponsored at the port in Lorraine. And I just want to tell you that's coming up, and it sounds like it's going to be exciting. And also, we are working on the Fourth Annual Summit for the Lorraine County Community Alliance. I met earlier this week with Shar Davis, who is the Public Services Institute Director at the college, together with Rebecca Gray, our coordinator. And Delta Institute will be one of the presenters at our summit on October the 17th, which is the third Friday in October. And Bob Sokolowski, who is the Executive Director of the National Association of Regional Councils, will be the keynote speaker, and we are meeting again this coming week to talk about some more breakout sessions. So if anyone has some suggestions or would like to participate, please let me know, and I thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I'd like to thank whoever got me this nice little gift, since everyone's kind of hiding from it and not admitting to it, but I'd like to thank them. Got a nice little card here. Yesterday, I had to get a colonoscopy, and I think that's why they got me the nice little gift. They asked me if it hurt, and I said, "Ah, it's more painful sitting up here than it is to get a colonoscopy."
Really?
Yes, but-.
I take that personally.
Now, but on a serious note, though, it wasn't painful at all, and everybody, because I know how guys are, and I have the most weakest stomach in the world, I passed out to sight of blood, and it wasn't painful at all, and I highly recommend it for anybody over 40, since that's one of the gifts of hitting over 40 is this type of examinations. It wasn't painful. I appreciate the efforts out at the Cleveland Clinic in Amherst, and it's really easy. Recommend it for any guy, it's a lot easier to do than death, so I do recommend it.
(laughing).
Yeah.
Shirley, I can't, I write that down what she said to you.
Trust me, you've heard my jokes, and I've been really close to death. I've died up here a few times, so...
No, you just think you have.
Yeah, but that was very good, Shirley, I'm proud of you.
I just wanted to be sure if you had, if you'd let us know what that's like.
Oh, oh, trust me. Oh, well. But that's all, just thanks for the little reminder here today, so...
Recommended for women, too, I mean, we, everybody, we're human, we all have problems.
Love that.
Okay, well, my trip to Wisconsin for the National Association of Counties was just great. Want to thank the board for sending me there, brought a stack of stuff back that I, of course, have to go through yet and sort it out, and Ron, you'll probably be getting some, everybody around here will probably be getting some information that I brought back. It was a very good conference, and I brought you these back. Here's some tapes.
Did you bring us presents again?
Just little things that I picked.
These aren't like home movies, are they? My trip to Wisconsin?
I don't think so, but I figured you would appreciate that.
Oh, there we go, hey.
There you go, Betty.
Oh, thank you. Oh, is that from Milwaukee? Give me mine.
Guess who gets this one? Jim. The black ball. Whoa. That goes to Jim, who's always behind the eight ball.
I'm not going to touch that one.
That's a stress ball.
Your comment is you've been thrown out of better places than this, don't you remember that?
And we had the opportunity, I'm sorry, we were invited to the house of Mr. Dollywall, and he's a petroleum, he has a petroleum company. It's my understanding he has like 600 marathon stations. A millionaire, it was an excellent opportunity to meet different people. Met the governor of Wisconsin, and also, oh gosh, I'm trying to think of who all was there, it was, he had about 2,000 people there from Naco, and also business people from all over the state, a lot of Indians. Was very interesting, was a very common person. He also donated $10 million to the college out there, so that would give some of his people an opportunity to get educated in the United States, and they passed out these little flags that I wanted to bring back to you.
Thank you. Jim?
And this little pin was from the award that we received, the Achievement Award. I imagine that should go to Solid Waste. There was only one, so...
We need to tell us about the award.
I don't have a copy of it with me. Jim, you could probably explain it better than I can. It was very fast, it was a small luncheon, and they just took our pictures, and we held up the award.
Oh, neat.
I believe that was the award for the environmental-.
It was for the computer program that we put together.
We applied for a couple.
Well, this one was for the computer program.
I don't have the information with me, Commissioner. We applied for several awards, and-.
Well, we did get one for the computer program.
And I apologize for not being fluid in that issue, but Dan did put together recycling program, and we did talk about it here a couple of weeks ago for the computer program, and we did have a collection day in the community, and I believe that was the program that we received the award for.
Yes, it was.
Thanks, thank you.
But I can have more information about it for the next meeting.
Well, I have it, but it's in the office.
Same, same here.
I didn't bring it out here with me.
Sorry, thanks.
Actually, that's all I have to report.
Okay, we do have one item under Old Business, and that would be to amend Resolution Number 03448, adopted June 12, 2003, relating to the purchase of permanent parcel number 1-0-0-0-03-130-004, Alariah, Ohio. The amendment is to reflect the total purchase price is $7,500. Two warrants need to be issued in the amount of $1,000 payable to Gregory Trucking, Inc., doing business as GTI Properties, and $2,177.20 payable to Lorraine County Sheriff. There have been two warrants issued in the amount of $3,276.52 payable to the Lorraine County Treasurer for delinquent taxes, and a warrant in the amount of $1,046.20 payable to the Lorraine County Sheriff.
So the purchase price is $7,500 plus these other costs, or is that included in the 7.5?
All those costs are included in the 7.5.
Madam Chair, you were absent from last week's meeting because you were in Milwaukee, and there was some discussion. Apparently, there's difference of opinion between the two remaining commissioners who were here about the purchase of this property. And I did make a motion to approve it, but it died for lack of a second. So I'll make a motion again this week to prove it and see what happens.
And this is a 40-foot by 120-foot vacant lot?
Commissioner, this is the property out close to the county engineer's property that we looked at. Early on, we believed that we would be able to purchase the property at the indicated values that the checks were cut for. Subsequent to that, during the bidding, there was quite a bit of activity on the property, and the bidding went higher than we anticipated, and it went past the parameters that were approved by this board. We were prepared to walk away from this issue completely and just let it go. The property was for the future expansion if needed for the county engineer. Subsequent to that, Gregory Trucking came in, they didn't realize that we were bidding on the property, and they came in and said, "If you want the property, we'll give it to you for what the bid was." They didn't know the county was interested in obtaining the parcels. We were bidding from one side of the room, and they were bidding from the other side of the room, and they didn't realize who was who. So they've made this offer to us. The board still desires the property there, if they don't desire the property, Gregory Trucking purchased it, so it's not really a major issue with us. But I just wanted to explain to you how the events led to us not being able to obtain the property at the price we thought we would get it for.
Well, that's what I figured happened, but we did, we did purchase other property there in the past.
Yes, yes, we have, Commissioner. We own several parcels, and several still would be needed to be obtained if we wanted to do anything down in that corridor, but over the last 10 or 15 years, slowly but surely, the board has been picking up parcels along that area by the garage.
So is this piece needed? We don't need it right now, right?
It would be a piece of property that would be put into our land bank for future expansion and development out of the county engineer's facility in years to come. If they wanted to develop on those parcels, eventually, they would need to obtain this parcel sometime in the future. It's strictly up to thinking of what the board believes we should be doing five, 10, 15 years from now. That's why we own a lot of property out of Murray Ridge, the other boards purchased blocks of land when they became available for future expansion of the county's needs.
I'm a little bit concerned with the budget crunches the way it is right now. What was the concern?
There really wasn't any discussion here. I think the discussion transpired afterwards with local news media, and comments were carried in the media, but there really wasn't much discussion that I recall at the board meeting.
Should I move on to the next item?
The issue dies for lack of a second.
Dies for lack of a second. Thank you, Mr. Cordez. Okay, we do have an item under New Business, and that's just basically a notice that the board meeting on July 24th will be at 7:00 p.m. It's the third night meeting, and it will be held at Eaton Township Hall, 12043 Avon Beldon Road, Grafton, Ohio, and there will be no morning meeting on that day. Board Correspondents. Can we go back to this parcel of land? Can we hold this for a week? I'd like to go out there and visit the section where this land is. Since I wasn't here last week when it was brought up, I'd like a little bit more time on it.
Absolutely. How about a motion to carry it under Old Business until you have a chance to review it, ma'am?
I will so moved to carry this until next week.
I'll second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Board Correspondents?
Before I move to the waiving of the reading, Madam Chair, I'd like to point the board to item number 12, which is a request from the Alariah Township Trustees. A copy of the letter says that they request the sanitary engineer to complete a feasibility study to provide sanitary sewers within the township with estimates of cost and a recommended phasing for the construction of the sewers. And number two, the Township Board of Trustees intends to request that the county sanitary engineer apply for issue two funding to assist with the construction of a Phase 1 project in the year 2004, and they make reference to their commercial area within the JED, which is to construct sanitary sewers on Griswold Road from Leona Street to Lake Avenue, along Lake Avenue, and I didn't think that this was merely a matter of board information or correspondence, I thought perhaps it was something we need to take action on. So I just want to bring that to your attention, and I believe Mr. Cordez is going to look into that on our behalf, but I wanted to make note of that. Am I correct in my assumption that we need to do something? In fact, this is to proceed?
I've just became aware of that in the last few minutes. I will work with the sanitary engineer and the township trustees. We certainly can do that, that's what we've been doing in Columbia Township. We're still working over there with Nissaud on some final terms and conditions of our contract with them, right? And Jerry's been working, he worked on the JED, Alariah Township, so-.
Right, and that's what this kind of is involved with, the new JED that has been proposed, and this is kind of the first project that they want to work on.
I saw it in the board business, and I thought that Jerry was taking care of this, and when it should be put on the agenda, when he was ready, he would request it to be put on there.
I don't think so. I think this is a request for action from Alariah Township Trustees.
Right.
I think it's incumbent upon us to do something with it, or to ask someone to do it on our behalf.
Yeah, we obviously need to bring you back, quite a bit of data, cost, et cetera, et cetera, so let us start the wheels in motion.
Okay.
Is that agreeable with the board?
Uh huh, yep.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll move that the correspondence reading be waived.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Is there anyone here that would like to address the board this morning?
Elizabeth Rannick, over in Ohio, I just simply would like to mention that the plantings along the south of Third Street side of the building here are extremely attractive, and I hope you will compliment the gardener or endor gardeners. All too often, these are the people who are invisible, and yet they're very valuable public servants, and it's that sort of person, I think, who occasionally needs a pat on the back, because they look very nice.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I think that Chad Smith from our maintenance department, with others, and he's even been featured in a newspaper article when he was out there working, so it takes a lot of time, TLC, and I just want to add mine, and thank you for bringing it to the public's attention.
Have you noticed that the grounds of the court house are very big?
Yes.
Okay, we've been working real hard to make a better presentation of our grounds. You'll see the same effort when the Justice Center holds a whole car.
Yeah, I see Chad out there just about every morning, and I compliment him on what a great job he does. That kid's got a green thumb. Okay, now, we're going to reset. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the board, has any questions, comments? Well, thank you for being here this morning. We are going to move into executive session.
That's your motion?
It's my motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Jim, whoever wants to speak on-.
Why don't we vote on the number nine first? Right, why don't we take us back to the personnel summary sheet?
Okay, that's item number nine. authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
So moved.
It will include three items, correct?
Correct.
I'll second.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Yes.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioners, I request a resolution authorizing us to release a letter proposal to the city of Lorraine to bring us closer together to resolving our issue of the litigation of, excuse me, litigation on local government funds. I have been in discussions with the administration in the city of Lorraine for about a month. We've been able to conclude those negotiations with a-. We've been able to conclude those negotiations with a proposal, I believe, is going to be successful at gaining Lorraine's cooperation and greatly reduce the demands that are on the table. And it should be good for all the parties in the end. I'll pass you a copy of this. It is a matter of litigation, so we have discussed that. You are aware of the terms and conditions therein. And I'm hoping that we will be able to move the county forward. We will need the cooperation after the city of Lorraine, of the townships and the villages. But I believe that we have two legs of the stool coming together with the city of Lorraine and the county. And then we need to work cooperatively with the remaining entities to both end the litigation and foster a new alternative formula that will at least move this county forward for the next 10 years. I think we need to show that leadership. We need to step forward. We need to make this proposal. And I'm glad that the board has sent me out there to do that over the period of the last month.
Okay, and in this proposal, it is included in order for this proposal to be implemented, if the city of Lorraine agrees with the same. The parties to the appeal will of course have to agree. In order to implement a new alternative formula, in addition to Lorraine City and Lorraine County agreeing, a majority of the remaining governmental entities in the county would have to agree.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, I would so move.
I'll second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
I believe that's all we have.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Some additional information. Karen gave me the information that if we don't purchase this land today, that Gregory Trucking, the people that did bid on the property, will have to pay for it by tomorrow.
Correct.
If not, and it's sold back to the county, we'll have to pay an additional cost. And I asked Karen to give me the information of the location of the property. And it appears as though the county owns the property surrounding this piece that is in question now. And I think it would only be prudent that we do purchase that piece of property now. Otherwise, in the future, it will cost the county more money. And we do have the funds available. I talked with John Roca C. Funds are available to purchase this. So I would move to go ahead and purchase this piece of property.
So we're going to amend resolution number 03448?
No, because it was on hold.
Okay. So this will just be a separate resolution?
Resolution to purchase the piece of property for $5,000.
No, no, not 5,000.
7,500.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I was confused with the 5,000 that was on there. 7,500. Gregory will be getting 5,000 and the other cost is for taxes?
Right, actually Gregory will receive $1,000.
And what was the other?
And the remaining balance goes to taxes and the remainder goes to the Lorraine County Sheriff for the sale of the property.
Oh, okay. So it comes back to the general fund.
And Jerry, if we acted properly?
Well, just so it's clear, this is...
I thought...
Just so you understand that this vote is part of an emergency meeting. The media are here, so they've been notified that we're having an emergency meeting. So that will, that motion will be part of a separate emergency meeting.
Okay, all right.
And then we're okay? And I'll second the motion then.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
And Commissioner Moore's absent.
Correct.
And I need a motion to adjourn. I so move to adjourn.
Are you sure we want to do that now? Is there anything else we might want?
That's all I think we have.
That's all? Okay, well, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Basie? Unless you can think of something else.
Well, I will, but next week's good, as long as we don't have a timeframe.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
And Commissioner Moore's absent.
The July 24th meeting will be an on-the-road meeting in Eaton Township at the Eaton Township Town Hall at 12043 Grafton Road. The on-the-road meetings are evening meetings and begin at 7:00 PM. As always, the public is invited. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you please stand, the pledge allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no appointments scheduled for today, so we'll start with resolutions. Item number one, job and family services bills. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Discussion?
One, no, even, just ignore me and then you go discussion. That's okay.
She forgot the discussion part. Don't give her a hard time.
But she forgot me, you know?
No, no. She remembered.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Moore?
Oh, thank you, all right.
Investments?
I give her a hard time a little bit for saying that.
No, not at all. Second. You're not allowed.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Advances and repayments? There wasn't any advances this morning. Okay.
None.
None?
None.
None.
All agree.
Requisitions? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Bills? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summaries for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Haven't seen it yet, so.
I don't think there's anything on it.
Yeah, there is.
This sheet I received had nothing on it.
The last one I saw had nothing on it, too.
Are we holding on, or what?
Well, I have other personnel issues that I'm going to need an executive session for, specifically other new hires. And I need that discussion with the board, which is allowed under the sunshine law. Okay.
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned, too. My phone was off again this morning, dead as a doornail. And this is about the second time since Nancy left.
The phone was off?
Dead. The phone was dead. And this has happened before. And it's all been since Nancy left. And I'm wondering, what are we going to do about replacing Nancy? We've got Jeff's position, we've got Roxy's position.
With respect to the phones, Commissioner Basie, while the administrator was on vacation, Mr. Twining took care of an issue.
Yeah, he had another one.
He called me to advise me what was transpiring. And I believe there was some paperwork that came through to let us know what was happening. So I think we bought, since I don't speak that language, bought some cards or something to make the phone system work. And it appears that, at least to my knowledge, that things are functioning properly now. Is that an accurate statement?
I know there was a catastrophic failure last week that required the replacement of some electronic boards. Something that's happened in the past and those things do happen and it will happen in the future again. I understood that everything was up and running properly because Mitel was out here. I do have information on Mitel contracts and proposed restructuring of the job that I will present to the board in the next couple of days. The information's on my desk. And with respect to the clerk's position, we had discussion on that two weeks ago, three weeks ago. We were waiting for some information from Teresa, and I haven't received that information from her.
And presently, she's on vacation.
Yes.
Okay.
And she didn't leave me anything, so.
She left us an agenda.
Yes, she did.
But obviously, we need to discuss those, I agree. And we can just, those are permissible items because they've been...
Yeah, I think we do have to discuss them. And Jeff, that's a position that was very important.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Okay, so are we holding until after the executive session? Item number 10. Authorize William C. Nagel Jr., bailiff, Avon Lake Municipal Court, effective retroactive to May 31st, 2003, replacing retired bailiff Paul T. Kitter. The salary will be $19,375.31 and the county's 2/5 share for bi-weekly rate will be $298.8. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Approve payment to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County Safety Harbor, Inc., doing business as Genesis House, for amounts collected by Lorraine County, $28,328 from January 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2003. Collection and payment pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 3113.39. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Item number 12. Approve amendments to various contracts for the fiscal year 2004 Help Me Grow program for Lorraine County Children and Family Council, effective retroactive to July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004. Said amendments are to adjust award amounts due to the decrease in funding for GRF Part C and increase in funding in TKNF. Catholic Charity Services Corp., Catholic Charities Family Center of Illyria, $89,620.23. Children's Development Center, $51,812.99. Community Health Partners Home Healthcare, $58,397.93. Illyria City Department of Health, $313,521.97. Lighthouse Family Service, also known as Lighthouse Family Services, $80,121.67. Lorraine City Health Department, $208,128.95. Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services, Inc., $11,765.19. Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, $30,787.12. Lorraine County General Health District, $151,538.24. Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County, $195,853.69. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Authorize North Ridge Road to be closed to one-way traffic during the Lorraine County Metropolitan Park District Pioneer Festival Days, September 6th and 7th, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM to ensure public safety. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore? Award contract to do 2D construction, Vermillion, Ohio, for the replacement of East River Road Bridge, number 0225, in Carlisle Township, and Albright Road, Culver, number 0014, in Amherst Township, in the amount of $57,152.60. And issue a notice to proceed letter to start honor before August 25th, 2003, and to complete honor before September 30th, 2003. Also authorize county administrator to notify county auditor to release retainage at the completion of said project. And there were three bids received, with this one being the most responsive.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
County administrators report?
No reports or comments, just want to thank you.
Assistant county prosecutor?
We didn't get sued this week, so.
All right.
Commissioners report? Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to mention that I was pleased to represent the Board of Commissioners yesterday at the groundbreaking for the Lorraine County Visitor Bureau Center on State Route 58 in Amherst Township. And this was made possible by the work of a lot of people, including our newly created Lorraine County Port Authority, which in March sold bonds in the amount of $1,245,000 to pay for the construction of this facility. So I was very pleased to be there and I wanted to mention that, too. And the other thing is that on Monday, I attended, I think it's a monthly meeting, the Black River RAP Remedial Action Plan. And they had a group there, Delta Institute they're called. In fact, Mr. Twining's office has been working with them. And they made a report to the RAP Coordinating Committee. And they're working with the city of Illyria in mercury reduction at their sewage treatment plant. And one of the things that came forward from this meeting was that they're going to showcase what the Lake Erie Commission has been doing in conjunction with the Black River on September the 6th at the Rib Cook-Off that's being sponsored at the port in Lorraine. And I just want to tell you that's coming up and it sounds like it's going to be exciting. And also, we are working on the Fourth Annual Summit for the Lorraine County Community Alliance. I met earlier this week with Shar Davis, who is the Public Services Institute Director at the college, together with Rebecca Gray, our coordinator. And Delta Institute will be one of the presenters at our summit on October the 17th, which is the third Friday in October. And Bob Sokolowski, who is the Executive Director of the National Association of Regional Councils, will be the keynote speaker. And we are meeting again this coming week to talk about some more breakout sessions. So if anyone has some suggestions or would like to participate, please let me know. And I thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I'd like to thank whoever got me this nice little gift, since everyone's kind of hiding from it and not admitting to it, but I'd like to thank them. Got a nice little card here. Yesterday, I had to get a colonoscopy and I think that's why they got me the nice little gift. They asked me if it hurt and I said, "Nah, it's more painful sitting up here than it is to get a colonoscopy."
Really?
Yes, but...
I take that personally.
But on a serious note, though, it wasn't painful at all. And anybody, because I know how guys are, and I have the most weakest stomach in the world, I passed out at the sight of blood and it wasn't painful at all. And I highly recommend it for anybody over 40, since that's one of the gifts of hitting over 40 is this type of examinations. It wasn't painful. I appreciate the efforts out at the Cleveland Clinic in Amherst. And it's really easy. Recommend it for any guy. It's a lot easier to do than death, so I do recommend it. Yeah.
Shirley, I can't, I write down what she said to you.
Oh, trust me, you've heard my jokes and I've been really close to death. I've died up here a few times, so.
No, you just think you have.
That was very good, Shirley. I'm proud of you.
I just wanted to be sure if you had, if you'd let us know what that's like.
Oh, trust me. Oh, well. But that's all. Just thanks for the little reminder here today, so...
We recommend it for women, too. I mean, we... Everybody, we're human, we all have problems.
Love it.
Okay. Well, my trip to Wisconsin for the National Association of Counties was just great. Want to thank the Board for sending me there. Brought a stack of stuff back that I, of course, have to go through yet and sort it out. Ron, you'll probably be getting some... Everybody around here will probably be getting some information that I brought back. It was a very good conference, and I brought you these back. Here's some tapes.
Did you bring us presents again?
Uh, just little things that I picked...
These aren't like home movies, are they? My trip to Wisconsin?
I don't think so. But I figured you would appreciate that.
Oh, there we go. Hey.
There you go, Betty.
Oh, thank you. Oh, is that from Milwaukee? Give me mine.
Guess who gets this one? Jim. The black ball.
Whoa!
That goes to Jim, who's always behind the eight ball.
I'm not going to touch that one.
That's a stress ball.
Your comment is you've been thrown out of better places than this.
And we had the opportunity... I'm sorry. We were invited to the house of Mr. Dollywall, and he's a petroleum... He has a petroleum company. It's my understanding he has like 600 marathon stations. A millionaire. It was an excellent opportunity to meet different people. Met the governor of Wisconsin, and also... Oh, gosh, I'm trying to think of who all was there. It was... He had about 2,000 people there from Naco, and also business people from all over the state, a lot of Indians. Was very interesting. He was a very common person. He also donated $10 million to the college out there, so that would give some of his people an opportunity to get educated in the United States. And they passed out these little flags that I wanted to bring back to you.
Thank you. Jim?
And this little pin was from the award that we received, the Achievement Award. I imagine that should go to solid waste. There was only one, so...
We need to tell us about the award.
I don't have a copy of it with me. Jim, you could probably explain it better than I can. It was very fast. It was a small luncheon, and they just took our pictures, and we held up the award.
Neat.
I believe that was the award for the environmental...
It was for the computer program that we put together.
We applied for a couple.
Well, this one was for the computer program.
I don't have the information with me, Commissioner. We applied for several awards, and...
Well, we did get one for the computer program.
And I apologize for not being fluid in that issue, but Dan did put together recycling program, and we did talk about it here a couple of weeks ago for the computer program. And we did have a collection day in the community. And I believe that was the program that we received the award for.
Yes, it was.
Thanks, thank you.
But I can have more information about it in the next meeting.
Well, I have it by... It's in the office.
Same, same here.
I didn't bring it out here with me.
Sorry, thanks.
Actually, that's all I have to report. Okay, we do have one item under Old Business, and that would be to amend Resolution Number 03448, adopted June 12, 2003, relating to the purchase of permanent parcel number 10-00-003-130-004, Alaria, Ohio. The amendment is to reflect the total purchase price is $7,500. Two warrants need to be issued in the amount of $1,000 payable to Gregory Trucking, Inc., Doing Business as GTI Properties, and $2,177.20 payable to Lorraine County Sheriff. There have been two warrants issued in the amount of $3,276.52 payable to the Lorraine County Treasurer for delinquent taxes, and a warrant in the amount of $1,046.20 payable to the Lorraine County Sheriff. So the purchase price is $7,500 plus these other costs? Or is that included in the 7.5? All those costs are included in the 7.5. Okay.
Madam Chair, you were absent from last week's meeting because you were in Milwaukee, and there was some discussion. Apparently, there's difference of opinion between the two remaining commissioners who were here about the purchase of this property. And I did make a motion to approve it, but it died for lack of a second. So I'll make a motion again this week to prove it and see what happens.
And this is a 40-foot by 120-foot vacant lot?
Commissioner, this is the property out close to the county engineer's property that we looked at. Early on, we believed that we would be able to purchase the property at the indicated values that the checks were cut for. Subsequent to that, during the bidding, there was quite a bit of activity on the property. And the bidding went higher than we anticipated, and it went past the parameters that were approved by the Board. We were prepared to walk away from this issue completely and just let it go. The property was for the future expansion if needed for the county engineer. Subsequent to that, Gregory Trucking came in. They didn't realize that we were bidding on the property, and they came in and said, "If you want the property, we'll give it to you for what the bid was." They didn't know the county was interested in obtaining the parcels. We were bidding from one side of the room, and they were bidding from the other side of the room, and they didn't realize who was who. So they made this offer to us. The Board still desires the property is there. If they don't desire the property, Gregory Trucking purchased it. It's not really a major issue with us. But I just wanted to explain to you how the events led to us not being able to obtain the property at the price we thought we would get it for.
Well, that's what I figured happened. But we did purchase other property there in the past.
Yes, yes, we have, Commissioner. We own several parcels, and several still would be needed to be obtained if we wanted to do anything down in that corridor. But over the last 10 or 15 years, slowly but surely, the Board has been picking up parcels along that area by the garage.
So is this piece needed?
It would be a piece of property that would be put into our land bank for future expansion and development out at the county engineer's facility in years to come. If they wanted to develop on those parcels, eventually, they would need to obtain this parcel sometime in the future. It's strictly up to thinking of what the Board believes we should be doing five, 10, 15 years from now. That's why we own a lot of property out of Murrage. The other Boards purchased blocks of land when they became available for future expansion of the county's needs.
I'm a little bit concerned with the budget crunches the way it is right now. What was the concern?
There really wasn't any discussion here. I think the discussion transpired afterwards with local news media, and comments were carried in the media, but there really wasn't much discussion that I recall at the Board meeting.
Should I move on to the next item?
The issue dies for lack of a second.
Dies for lack of a second. Thank you, Mr. Cordez. Okay, we do have an item under New Business, and that's just basically a notice that the Board meeting on July 24th will be at 7:00 p.m. It's the third night meeting, and it will be held at Eaton Township Hall, 12043 Avon Beldon Road, Grafton, Ohio. And there will be no morning meeting on that day. Board correspondence. Can we go back to this parcel of land? Can we hold this for a week? I'd like to go out there and visit the section where this land is. Since I wasn't here last week when it was brought up, I'd like a little bit more time on it.
Absolutely. How about a motion to carry it under Old Business until you have a chance to review it, ma'am?
I would so move to carry this until next week.
I'll second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Board correspondence?
Before I move to the waiving of the reading, Madam Chair, I'd like to point the Board to item number 12, which is a request from the Alaria Township Trustees. A copy of the letter says that they request the sanitary engineer to complete a feasibility study to provide sanitary sewers within the township with estimates of cost and a recommended phasing for the construction of the sewers. And number 2, the Township Board of Trustees intends to request that the county sanitary engineer apply for issue 2 funding to assist with the construction of a Phase 1 project in the year 2004. And they make reference to their commercial area within the JED, which is to construct sanitary sewers on Griswold Road from Leona Street to Lake Avenue, along Lake Avenue. And I didn't think that this was merely a matter of Board information or correspondence. I thought perhaps it was something we need to take action on. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I believe Mr. Cordez is going to look into that on our behalf, but I wanted to make note of that. Am I correct in my assumption that we need to do something? In fact, this is to proceed?
I've just became aware of that in the last few minutes. I will work with the sanitary engineer and the township trustees. We certainly can do that. That's what we've been doing in Plumview Township. We're still working over there with Nissaw on some final terms and conditions of our contract with them, right? And Jerry's been working... He worked on the JED at Alaria Township, so...
Right, and that's what this kind of is involved with, the new JED that has been proposed, and this is kind of the first project that they want to work on.
I saw it in the Board business, and I thought that Jerry was taking care of this, and when it should be put on the agenda, when he was ready, he would request it to be put on there.
I don't think so. I think this is a request for action from Alaria Township Trustees. I think it's incumbent upon us to do something with it, or to ask someone to do it on our behalf.
Yeah, we obviously need to bring you back. Quite a bit of data, cost, et cetera, et cetera. So let us start the wheels in motion.
Okay.
Is that agreeable with the Board?
Uh huh. Yep.
Thank you. And then I'll move that the correspondence reading be waived.
Second.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment? Is there anyone here that would like to address the Board this morning?
Elizabeth Rannick's over in Ohio. I just simply would like to mention that the plantings along the south of Third Street side of the building here are extremely attractive, and I hope you will compliment the gardener or indoor gardeners. All too often, these are the people who are invisible, and yet they're very valuable public servants. And it's that sort of person, I think, who occasionally needs a pat on the back, but they look very nice.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I think that Chad Smith from our maintenance department, with others, and he's even been featured in a newspaper article when he was out there working, so it takes a lot of time. TLC and I just want to add mine. And thank you for bringing it to the public's attention.
Have you noticed the grounds of the court? How's it going to be improved, or something?
Yes.
We've been working real hard to make a better presentation of our grounds. You'll see the same effort when the Justice Center opens, whole car.
Yeah, I see Chad out there just about every morning, and I compliment him on how what a great job he does. That kid's got a green thumb. Okay, now, we're going to reset. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the Board? Has any questions, comments? Well, thank you for being here this morning. We are going to move into executive session.
Get your motion?
It's my motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Jim, whoever wants to speak on the issue?
Why don't we vote on the number 9 first?
Right, why don't we take us back to the personal summary sheet?
Okay, that's item number 9. Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
So move.
It will include three items, correct?
Correct.
I'll second.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Yes. Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioners, I request a resolution authorizing us to release a letter proposal to the city of Lorraine to bring us closer together to resolving our issue of the litigation of local government funds. I have been in discussions with the administration in the city of Lorraine for about a month. We've been able to conclude those negotiations with a proposal I believe is going to be successful at gaining Lorraine's cooperation and greatly reduce the demands that are on the table. And it should be good for all the parties in the end. I'll pass you a copy of this. We... It is a matter of litigation, so we have discussed that. You are aware of the terms and conditions therein. And I'm hoping that we will be able to move the county forward. We will need the cooperation of half of the city of Lorraine, up to townships and the villages, but I believe that we have two legs of the stool coming together with the city of Lorraine and the county. And then we need to work cooperatively with the remaining entities to both end the litigation and foster a new alternative formula that will at least move this county forward for the next 10 years. I think we need to show that leadership. We need to step forward. We need to make this proposal, and I'm glad that the Board has sent me out there to do that over the period of the last month.
Okay, and in this proposal, it is included in order for this proposal to be implemented, if the city of Lorraine agrees with the same. The parties to the appeal will, of course, have to agree. In order to implement a new alternative formula, in addition to Lorraine City and Lorraine County agreeing, a majority of the remaining governmental entities in the county would have to agree.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, I would so move.
I'll second.
Mr. Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
I believe that's all we have.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Some additional information. Karen gave me the information that if we don't purchase this land today, that Gregory Trucking, the people that did bid on the property, will have to pay for it by tomorrow. If not, and it's sold back to the county, we'll have to pay an additional cost. And I asked Karen to give me the information of the location of the property, and it appears as though the county owns the property surrounding this piece that is in question now. And I think it would only be prudent that we do purchase that piece of property now, otherwise, in the future, it will cost the county more money. And we do have the funds available. I talked with John Roca C. Funds are available to purchase this, so I would move to go ahead and purchase this piece of property. So we're going to amend Resolution Number 03448?
No.
No, because it was on hold. Okay. So this will just be a separate resolution? To purchase the piece of property for $5,000.
No, no. Not $5,000.
$7,500. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I was confused with the $5,000 that was on there. $7,500. Gregory will be getting $5,000, and the other cost is for taxes? Right, actually, Gregory will receive $1,000. And the remaining balance goes to taxes, and the remainder goes to the Lorraine County Sheriff for the sale of the property. Oh, okay. So it comes back to the general fund.
And Jerry, have we acted properly?
Well, just so it's clear, this is...
I got...
Just so you understand that this vote is part of an emergency meeting. The media are here, so they've been notified that we're having an emergency meeting. So that will... That motion will be part of a separate emergency meeting.
Okay. All right.
And then we're okay? And I'll second the motion then.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
And Commissioner Moore's absent.
Correct.
And I need a motion to adjourn. I so move to adjourn.
Are you sure we want to do that now? Is there anything else?
That's all I think we have.
That's all? Okay, well, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Vacy? Unless you can think of something else?
Well, I will, but next week's good, as long as we don't have a timeframe.
Commissioner Vacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen.
And Commissioner Moore's absent.
The July 24th meeting will be an on-the-road meeting in Eaton Township at the Eaton Township Town Hall at 12043 Grafton Road. The on-the-road meetings are evening meetings and begin at 7:00 PM. As always, the public is invited. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lurie County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Lurie. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Welcome to another broadcast of the Lurie County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings.
Well, I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners this morning for being here. Sun shining, we've got a beautiful day. It's an honor to have you here today. The opening benediction will be presented by Chaplain Bill Davis. Would you please stand and remain standing for the presentation of the flags presented by Southview ROTC? And then it will be followed by the National Anthem presented by Admiral King High School.
Our Heavenly Father, first of all, thank you for this beautiful day, and make us truly grateful of these Medal of Honor recipients and the goodly Harrys thou hast bestowed upon this nation because of their unselfish acts. They have helped make this a great nation and the world a better place. Watch over our leaders, our people, and our nation, and keep us ever mindful of the sacrifices made for us by our fallen comrades, and make us worthy of your loving kindness, and may this ceremony bring them the recognition they deserve. And please remember all our service men and women everywhere in the world, and remember all the MIAs and POWs from all wars and conflicts. Amen.
Forward march! Left, face! Present, arms! Orders, march! Right, face! Forward, march!
Thank you. I don't know about you, but the National Anthem always gives me goosebumps. Please be seated. Today we have gathered to honor those who have received the America Medal of Honor, but we must also recognize the honor, recognize and honor all of the courageous men and women in the past, present, and future that have and will continue to fight for our freedom and the principles for which America stands. At this time, we would like to unveil the plaque, but I would like to take one moment to thank Ken Cromer of Lurie Library for making it possible for us to display the authentic Medal of Honor given posthumously to Charles Berry, which is right here, and the picture of Charles is also right near it. But I would also like to ask the family members and relatives of all that we are honoring today to come up and assist us in the unveiling.
Good morning, everybody. As everyone's coming up here, I want at least to recognize the people that did drive here. We have somebody that actually came from as far away as Minnesota, regarding the Berry family. Richard Berry's here, Robert Berry is here, Maurice Graham and his son Matthew from Marion, Ohio. Janine Ruckus and her husband Dan is here from Avon Lake. It was Lee Prichet and his wife is here from Deerwood, Minnesota. Gene Jozinski is here from Vermillion. And the Berrys that were here are from Amherst, Ohio, and from Vermillion, Ohio. And that is the Berrys, first cousins is what I was talking to them earlier today about. Most of them are all first cousins, and I'm honored to have you here. Now, not to leave anyone out, I'm a big family tree buff, and I know a lot of people have family trees. If there's anybody else, you know, this is the ones that we could find. Is there anybody else here that is a member of any of the Medal of Honor recipients? Is there, there's two people in the band?
Two boys.
Two boys in the band that if you'd like to come on up, you are to help participate in the unveiling of the plaque. We'd be honored to have you up here. If there's anybody else regarding any other members, because this is the family that we could contact to help participate. Okay, if not, then we will proceed to the unveiling. Thank you, what a great day. Usually these events, always somehow we get rain, but today we were very fortunate. Thank you all for attending. I'd like to thank a few people that made this possible. As you keep hearing Sandy's name, she's trying to hide in the back. She really did a good job putting this together, and she had a lot of help. Janice Mokos, Joyce Parks, Teresa Upton, Marilyn Tracy, Jennifer Demage, and Dave Karpinski, the maintenance staff. We're all instrumental in bringing this thing together. I think it was a very, very good event. I think the plaque is, it's very beautiful, and it's going to be proud to be here in Lurie County. Let's see what we got here. Also, Commissioner Blair could not make it. Her grandson had a benediction today, and she participated in that event at the same time at 10 o'clock this morning. So she sends her regards. But to move along, John Polger is here, the commander of the VFW 1079, to give recognition of each military branch individually. So I'd like to introduce John Polger.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. We're going to recognize each military branch individually, and the music will be played by the Admiral King High School Band and the Irish Heritage Pipe Band. And when we play your theme song, would the members of that branch please stand up? First, the United States Air Force, the theme song performed by the Admiral King Band. Now my favorite branch, the United States Navy, theme song performed by the Admiral King Band.
I'm probably missing a few people here, but I want to at least recognize a few of our elected officials that are here today that are also veterans. I see Sheriff Tommety's over here, Judge Wurman, Judge Jozinski, and Judge Glavas, and Judge Zalaski, some of our elected officials that are also veterans. With us today, we're going to have a few speakers, and I'll be introducing them one by one. This next person happens to be, was a personal close friend of Charles Berry, and his name is Joe Magazine, World War II veteran. If you want to have a few words, I'll just hand it over to you. How's that?
Appreciate your bravery. Oh, excuse me, I'm not the best speaker in the world. Appreciate everybody coming up with the remembrance of these fellows. They're real heroes in the United States. I hate to say this, but I don't mean ballplayers are heroes, but all the young fellows know that the ballplayers, they don't go up and play football by the monitors. But we've got to turn that around in a bigger way.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. And as you told me, you were a friend of Charles earlier, right? You were a friend of Charles Berry? Yes, you were. And with all the family here, if you'd like to come up and talk to Joe afterwards, there's a good book. There we go.
Chuck Berry, he was a great Marine, and he was a dumb old Marine, and he was a big influence on all the young ones.
Thanks, Joe. Next to speak, Walt Warner's here, a Korean War veteran. Walt?
The Medal of Honor is the highest award for bravery, above and beyond the call of duty that can be given to any person serving the military of the United States of America. The Medal of Honor was signed in law by President Abraham Lincoln on December 21st, 1861. Since it was first awarded in 1863, 3,410 individuals have been awarded this medal. We are gathered here today to honor five thousand racks of bravery, racks of bravery carried them above and beyond the call of duty. These recipients of the Medal of Honor from Lurie County served in the following wars: the Civil War, Indian campaigns, Mexican campaigns, and World War II. Every generation has its own heroes. Today, our young men and women are engaged in yet another conflict. For the first time in history, we have experienced a direct and marked attack against innocent civilians on our own shores by foreign powers. These young men and women are fighting to protect our rights and freedom so that you have the right to choose to speak out and express your own opinions for or against the public policies of our time. In closing, I would like to repeat a few paragraphs to tell the story of how I feel and how you should feel. It's in a song. "I'm proud to be an American, or at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend who's still today, because there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA, and God bless our military wherever they may be, and God bless America."
Next, I'd like to introduce Don, a Vietnam War veteran.
I was going to write down a few little things, but I want to be the best that I just speak from here. First of all, I'd like to thank the County Commissioners' Office for inviting me here today. It truly is an honor to be here today and pay tribute to our Medal of Honor recipients. As myself, being a Vietnam vet, I served in Vietnam in 1970 to '71. I was with the 101st, excuse me, with the 524th Quartermaster Company in Camron Bay, where I dealt with petroleum, where we offloaded ships in the bay, pumped to the tank farm from the tank farm to tankers and that, and then distributed the fuel throughout Vietnam. I consider myself truly blessed to come back home here to the world, as what we called it when we were there in Vietnam, because we truly were in another world. But to come back here, it was truly a blessing. Since then, I've put my heart and add towards our veterans here throughout the county, and also I hold a position of public relations and fundraising chairman for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Committee, which here- Which here to my right, Sandy from the county commissioner's office asked me to bring in our scale model here of the memorial that we're currently underway with, to honor the 98 Vietnam veterans who died from Lorain County, that they're never forgotten, or their families, and what they have done. And once again, I'd like to express my thanks for being here today, to be part of this. It truly is an honor. And with that, I'll close. If you've got freedom, thank you then.
Next I'd like to introduce Steve Lawson, the Gulf War veteran. Steve?
Good morning. I'd like to thank the county commissioners and their staff for inviting me to speak at this ceremony honoring our local Medal of Honor recipients. It is an honor for me to be here representing the Desert Storm or the Persian Gulf veterans. Do we have any more out in the audience today? Who's going anyway? I thought it'd be important to provide a brief background regarding the Medal of Honor. A little bit of that was previously mentioned. Everyone's heard about the Medal of Honor, but most of us don't really know too much about it. As was mentioned, the Medal of Honor is the highest military honor in the United States of America. It is awarded by the President of the United States on behalf of Congress, so it is often referred to as the Congressional Medal of Honor. The criteria has changed since its inception, but basically today it is awarded for distinguished, gallant, and atrepid service at the risk of life, above and beyond the call of duty in conflict with an opposing force. Out of the millions of United States Armed Forces veterans and the numerous conflicts that they have served in, only 3,435 Medals of Honor have been awarded to 3,416 recipients. 319 of which were from Ohio, and only one has been awarded to a woman. Recipients of the Medal of Honor and their families are afforded special pensions, courtesies, and privileges. The Medal of Honor was created due to the Civil War in December of 1861, and was made a permanent decoration in 1863. Unfortunately, a lot of Medals of Honor are awarded posthumously, and there were only approximately 150 living recipients at this time. In my 23 years of service in the United States Army, I had the pleasure of personally meeting two recipients of the Medal of Honor, and to finally learn that these heroes are just average, everyday citizens and Americans serving our country who did the honorable thing at the honorable time. Thank you.
Also invited today, from the Iraqi war, we invited the family of Sergeant, Sergeant Torrey's family. I don't know if they're here. We did invite them and Sandy was, okay, I guess they could not make it today, so. Then next, I'd like to introduce our soloist, Lisa Myers. There you go.
Thank you. You know, this morning has really and truly been a day of remembrance and a tear day, a tear jerking day, with the bands, the song, all our vets that are here, and those that have passed on. And the memory of all these people, it's just too hard to keep the tears back. And I can't tell you how much we all appreciate our servicemen and women. You know, more than a century ago, once of the, one of the earliest recipients of the Medal of Honor, the Civil War Hero General Joshua Chamberlain, returned to Gettysburg and spoke at the dedication of a monument of his soldiers. He said, "The inspiration of a noble cause involving human interests far and wide enables men to do things they did not dream themselves capable of before." Today, at this grand memorial to Americans of singular courage and character, we gather with hearts that are indeed greatened to their limit. We gather to express the fullness of our gratitude to America's greatest heroes, who were not blind to fears, but rather strong enough to see through them, who reached deep within to achieve what even they may have considered impossible. Destiny has carved a signature of their lives into this stone. I dare say that no one will be able to witness the force of this memorial without being moved to the very center of their souls. America is eternally indebted to the families and friends of all servicemen and women who stood and continue to stand behind each of these heroes. It is never too late for us, individually and collectively, to say we recognize your loss, we respect your sacrifice, but the greatest honor we can pay to those who have fought for America is to rededicate ourselves to the principles for which America stands, to ensure that those who suffered or died shall not have done it in vain. With that, I want to thank you once again for being here, and God be with you. Would you please stand for a moment of silence and retirement of the flags?
A Brookside High School student, Will Emery, will be playing tabs.
At this time, the VFW Honor Guard, timed as well as Memorial 1079, will fire a salute. South URO TC will now retire the flags.
Please stay standing for the closing benediction, which will be given by Brian Del Torco. Thank you.
We bow our hearts in prayer. Father God, we want to acknowledge you, we want to honor you this day. We thank you for this beautiful day, this beautiful ceremony, and for these Medal of Honor recipients and their family members that we honor today. God, we first honor you, we acknowledge you, and we honor that ultimate veteran, your son, Jesus Christ, who you sent, who came with honor and courage and fought for our freedom. Lord, we acknowledge you, we honor you, we thank you that you are the God of our fathers, you are the God of Washington, the God of James Madison, the God of Thomas Jefferson. We thank you for this beautiful country that we live in, with freedom, with great privilege. We thank you for the sovereign purpose that is upon our nation, the destiny and calling that is upon America, to extend justice and freedom throughout the world. Lord, we lift up our nation to you today during this season of trial, and we pray for our services around the world today, in the Middle East and around the world, as they uphold our freedom, as they continue to guard the liberties that we enjoy and fight for other nations as well. Father, we lift up these servicemen that are under before you, and we pray that you would strengthen them, Father, with your courage, with your purpose, with a sense of destiny and calling that extends beyond their own lives. We thank you for them, Father, and we honor them today. Father, we thank you for these Medal recipients, Lord, we honor them, we honor their families. They would be proud of new generations which are arising, fighting with courage and purpose. And we pray, Father, that you would continue to rest your hand upon our country, that you would continue to fulfill our purpose and our destiny as a nation. We thank you for our county, God, we lift up Lorain County before you. We pray, God, that your purpose and that your will will be done in our county. We lift up our commissioners before you, all of our leaders. We pray that you would strengthen them and give them your wisdom as they lead in our county. Father, bless everybody who's here today, every student, every family member, every person, every individual who's here today. We pray that our own lives, our own families, will have your touch upon it, Father. And we thank you for it, Lord, we'll give you glory. And everybody sit and lean.
Thank you. You know, as many of you know, my husband passed away about a year ago, but he was also a serviceman. And you know, to all our service people and their relatives and family and friends, I could just say this. When they had that casket draped with the flag, and the VFW from North Ridgeville had the gun salute and we had a band, it was just the most touching thing, and it was like, "America, this is what it's all about." And to you people, I know how you feel, I understand your feelings. And may God bless each and every one of you, and once again, thank you for being here, and keep your hearts and minds open to America. That's what it's all about, our freedom comes. Thanks again.